Any alternates? I think we have a full complement of commissioners. Thank you, everybody. First order of business is the approval of the minutes of the March 1st regular meeting. I had made some edits to the first draft and it was on the Dropbox on Friday. My edits were in yellow. Anybody have any other comments?
Yeah, I didn't see your edits. I just see what's in the Dropbox and I had a couple of things.
Okay.
First of all, we have absent as Melissa is absent, yet later on in the meeting, she had comments.
Say that Melissa?
Yeah. Osborne, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And maybe it's two different people. One time she has an E and one time she doesn't. But so she must have. She must have come in late.
Oh, she's under present and she's also under absent.
Oh, okay. So maybe she came in late then.
Let's change her to presence.
Okay.
The other one is it was a little confusing in the minutes because we have two different Doyle's in the, in the, in the meeting. We had Commissioner Doyle and then you had Presenter Doyle and so. You're head okay there, Mike? So it was a little, you know, so, so Mr. Doyle made a emotion. Let's see, Mr. Doyle made the motion on line, uh, well, so we have several Mr. Doyle's and line 68, which is our, is, is, is Mike and then seconded by Mr. Doyle on 80. And then the next paragraph, when we're dealing with the, you know, like, like nine, line 90, you have Mr. Doyle from Lada. So we never really, I mean, I think we should have just done a better job of distinguishing between the two Doyle's.
Always a good thing in my house to distinguish between the Doyle's.
The Doyle's, yeah, we want the ones and the not guilty ones. But even if you just do an M or something, you know?
Or just Commissioner changed my Mr. Doyle's to Commissioner Doyle.
Commissioner Doyle, yeah, that would be a good one. Yeah.
That makes it obvious.
Yeah.
That was, that was one of my submissions, Mr. Chairman. I also noticed that we're missing a space between March and one in the header.
Okay.
And Madigan in second on line 162.
What's missing, Kevin?
That's a space. Line 62, 162.
962.
162, 162.
Oh, of the, yeah, of the zoning?
So.
I had, go ahead.
162 has Ms. Madigan seconded. Ms. Madigan seconded. It looks like her last name is Madigan seconded.
Space is missing.
Yeah, just a space.
I got that as 163, okay.
All right. Well, then we're looking at two different minutes. So we may not have your changes.
Right, because, yeah, I had, I had edited them and my edits are in yellow. And the things that I changed is Donna Beinstein's name was misspelled in line 15. Line 39, brick pavers around a fireplace. I think there was something. It didn't say fireplace.
It'd be fire pit.
Pit, yeah.
Fire pit.
Okay. And with the possibility of fencing it around, around it and propane feed. There was some other word there. This is the fire district.
The feed. The word that most accurately describes it probably would be supply, right? They planned on having the ability to supply, basically fire the pit with propane.
Okay.
With a portable bottle.
Okay, we got that, Laura?
It just needs to say propane supply, period, right, Mike?
Yeah, supply is, supply is the word.
Right. And in line 44, 45, 46, Mr. Gray inquired if, use underground propane for the fires. Then there was a sentence that, two, two sentences that I deleted. I don't know why, but they didn't seem to be needed. So I took out, it was drafted. It was clarified that use use Class A material and no propane was used in the buildings. I think that was inconsistent or incomplete.
All right, I don't even see that.
Forty-four.
Probably 45.
Yeah, no, I don't know. The minutes on the Dropbox are old?
The minutes on the Dropbox are the updated minutes.
Yeah, I know. I printed mine before Friday, so I don't have the edits that Dave is going through right now either. I have a set of my own.
Yeah, I'm not seeing some of this stuff.
Well, we'll.
Minutes don't have anything about Class A, which was actually hay, wasn't it? Is what he said was the Class A material.
Oh, right.
It was hay, yes.
But I, that's not even in the minutes that I see.
Okay, it was, it's, in the original, it said after Mr. Gray inquired if they used underground propane for the fires. It was clarified that use Class A material. And there's probably something missing there. It was clarified that they use Class A material. And that no more, no propane is used in the building. So we could put that back, Laura. That would be better.
Yeah, what it now says is at this point, the proposal is for the same technology as the old building, small restrictive spaces lined with ceramic tile. There's no Class A in there at all.
Okay, so the minutes, there were two cap. One is my minutes that I edited and Laura put those minutes edits in and put them up. So that's why you've got
Yeah.
that missing because it was deleted. But we're going to put that back, okay? Anything else that anybody has found?
Yeah, on line 114, well, it's 114 on, you know, my set, but it's, there's a reference in the middle of the line to Mr. Gray inquired what wood steps would need.
Steps would need to be taken. No, it does now say it inquired what, oh, what wood steps, what would, well, I probably spoke like that.
Yeah, the first wood needs to go out of there. So it's delete the first wood. Only one was needed.
Yeah, what, what steps would be taken? Yeah.
Yep.
Then line 143. It says we, a motion that we send a motion to Dino Nobel. I think it was a motion that we send a letter or something.
It was a letter.
Okay. And I don't know if we got this one already. Not line 20 on my sheet is a motion seconded by Ms. Gray. Ms. Should be Mr.
Oh, yeah, I missed that one.
Me too. Good catch, Bruce.
Yeah. Well, it's Mr. Further down, so we want to have a match. Okay, that's it.
The most riveting discussion I can ever remember about minutes.
Minutes.
Okay, did we move to adopt them as modified?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Who moved?
That was Kevin.
Kevin in second by Mike. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay, they carry six, nothing. Good, thank you. That was a lot of work. Okay, the first order of business is application 20 dash 09 of Mark and Iki Scully.
Ika.
Ika, okay.
Ika.
And I guess they're going to tell us what changes they've decided on.
Yes, be, be happy to. Thank you, uh, thank you for the chance to, to make this presentation. Did you see the earlier version of, of these plans? Because these are, these are revised.
Yes, you had, you had presented some to us and then I think the Design Review Board had some questions and so we just tabled it or.
Right.
Yes, it was tabled.
Yeah, because this is a 20 dash something.
Right, great. So, um, if you've seen them, then I don't need to go over the whole history, but I will maybe just preface it with the, you know, our, our, our goal all along with, with taking on the Inside House project was not only to restore this beautiful building, but do it in a way that is energy efficient and reduce its, uh, its, its environmental footprint. So solar was always sort of part of the plan. The idea of generating some of, some of our, of our electricity needs onsite, something we wanted to do. It's taken us a while to figure out the best configuration, but I think the, the one we have now is, it's, you know, it's, it's a compromise, but I think it's, it's, it's a really good approach. So what we're proposing here is two solar canopies or carports covering portions of the, of the parking lot and a, a number of panels on the roof of the annex. Not on the Inside House proper, but on the, on the newer, the newer annex building. And the diff, the main difference from what you saw the last time that we, that we brought this forward is that there, there are two canopies covering parking lots. Uh, one of them is much smaller than before. The one that's on the southern edge facing Dino Nobel, that's the same as what we proposed before. The one that is covering the interior parking spaces is significantly smaller than before. What we had before was, was a big rectangular or pretty much square, actually long span, sort of tabletop covering that whole parking area. And what we've done now is we've reduced that to just covering two rows of parking spaces. It's a, it's a cantilever design, so it's got posts and then a, and then, and then a slanted surface housing, housing the panels. So that's much smaller than before. It's not visible at all from the roadway. It's general, uh, presence is smaller. So in particular, if you're at the Inside House on the sidewalk or if you're in the hair salon looking out their window, which is sort of at sidewalk level, um, much smaller presence, you'll probably really, really barely see the thing. The the footings are concrete and some of them are in the dirt. Some of them are in, uh, sort of in between parking spaces. The ones that are in the dirt, we want to keep to a minimum sort of six inches. The ones in the parking spaces will be about 18 inches. You've got, I think you, I think you have two renderings of the, of the carport, so you can see sort of, you know, what, what they're going to look like.
I think any other details I should cover?
There are gutters on them. There's lighting underneath it. We have light, streetlights that go out to the parking lot now and we'll just convert them to being attached to the underside of the solar panels.
So we'll, we'll lose one existing light that, that is there over near the, near the dumpsters and we'll replace that with some lighting underneath. Uh, we're not changing the parking configuration at all, so same number of parking spaces and we're not changing the, uh, any impervious surfaces. The, um, as, as, as Ika said, the, the carport covering, uh, the interior parking spaces will have a gutter and direct the, uh, the rainwater into, into the catch basin. The one that, uh, that extends over, um, towards Dino Nobel really doesn't need a gutter. That will just drain off onto that, onto that side and in, into that already pervious surface.
These solar panels are bi-facial, so they catch solar from above, obviously, but they also catch, um, reflected rays from below. So both sides are active and I think that's pretty cool. And the, the, a lot of, you, you won't see a lot of wires. They're all very tactfully tucked away.
And the, 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 one of the characteristics of the bi-facial panels is that they're more translucent. So it won't be sort of a dark presence underneath there. There would, is some light coming through. And as, and as Ika said, um, you know, our, our solar installer who is here tonight, if we have questions, um, is really goes to great lengths to conceal all of the wires. So we're doing everything we can to make these, uh, this structure as attractive as possible. The, the core sort of industrial structure of the, of, 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 of the canopies will be, um, painted gray as, as they're seen in, in the rendering. And you can see they are in, um, an I-beam structure. And we've, uh, we had a lot of discussion and we, we did a lot of looking into potential, uh, designs here. And the alternative is boxing these structures in and we have actually went and looked at some canopies that have a box structure and we found them to be actually clunkier and more industrial and this, these I-beams actually we think are going to look better longer. It's a, it's really a more of a, of a slender and tapered, tapered look. So, um, we are doing everything we can to make these, make these, um, these attractive. There are co-benefits to having solar canopies. They, in addition to producing electricity, they'll have some shading and protection from the elements for the, for cars parked underneath.
So everybody's not fighting for the one tree that's left to park under the shade.
Mark, what is slanted option one? What is different about that?
Different from, from the design we had before?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know why that one was marked, marked, um, slanted option one. I was looking for, is there an option two? Yeah, there's a slanted option two. So what's the difference?
Yeah, the, the way the, um, the artist who did the rendering, he's just named, those are different views. It's the same set of, of, really just a different perspective, right? Once he's put those in, he can look at it from anywhere, so. And, and, and the difference from before is just, uh, that carport that's covering the interior spaces, it's much, it's, it's, it's much smaller. And, and we didn't have solar on the roof of the annex before.
Right. Any other comments from commissioners, questions? Donna?
How, how high are those? They look pretty high.
Yes, we need to make sure that the low end, you know, that the one, the one that's, um, covering the interior parking spaces is, um, the one where the height is the most concerned because you've got a low end there towards the eastern edge. And we want to make sure that that is tall enough that, you know, a pickup truck with a ladder could, could be underneath. And, um, we're, it, it looks like that'll be about 10, maybe 11 feet tall at its lowest point.
Okay.
What is the life expectancy for these?
That's a good question. I don't know if our solar install, I think, you know, the, the panels are typically guaranteed from a performance standpoint for 25 years. We'll have to replace the inverter after maybe 10. And at that point, you know, who knows, at that point, probably the, the, we have, we're going to have such higher efficiency panels. We'd probably keep the structure and then replace the panels, but is, is 25 years a good number, Damon?
Absolutely. I mean, they, they'll keep working. I mean, they've been working for 70 years, but, um, you know, they, they, they'll make nicer panels, but they'll keep working if you, if, if you leave them.
Doesn't the efficiency drop off?
It does.
Over time?
A tiny bit, like they say about half of a percent per year based on like dirt building up. But in reality, with the way the weather has changed and, and such, there's actually more sun. So solar panels are producing more than the ones that we were putting on 10 years ago. So it's, it's tough to say.
Mike, questions?
I, I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Bruce?
I have a couple of questions. I, I'm curious about, uh, I'm looking at the material that we were given last September, our meeting on the 21st. There is a narrative, uh, about the panels that describes, um, well, in brief, it's the sentence that says below are several pictures of designs similar to ours. Oh, and it's really the sentence before that, but there's reference to stone faced footings. Are stone faced footings, I'm not sure exactly what they are, but are they still part of the plan?
No.
Okay.
The size of the thing is, is smaller than before, so, um, they'll, they'll be less visible. So we're not, we're not going to do that.
Okay.
You keep making the, the footing bigger and bigger, you, you run into less space for cars. So it's, it's.
Yeah, I'm not criticizing. I'm just trying to be sure that we have a good description of, a valid description of what you're going to do. And did you say that you're, the underside of the panels are going to have some sort of lighting?
Yes.
In the new plan?
Yes.
I, I didn't see any reference to lighting on the underside in the original plan.
There, there isn't. Really what you're looking at, the, um, the, the plans we submitted came from the manufacturer of the canopy. So it's not in, uh, I'm, um, apologies, it's not really in anything we submitted to you, but, um, we do plan to, to, we'll be losing one light post down by the, by the dumpster. So we want to at least replace any lighting with some downward facing lighting underneath the canopy.
So you don't actually have a lighting plan?
We do not have a lighting plan.
Okay. I'm, I was also, as a matter of curiosity and not anything more, but I was curious as to whether you ended up with more square footage in terms of the panels when you went up on the roof of the older building. Instead of, you know, when you made the one in the parking lot smaller and then put panels on the roof. Do you have more now or the same amount in terms of square footage?
We have. I don't know the square footage, but I can tell you the, the, um, the capacity in kilowatts and it was about 140 before and now it's about 120. So that's proportional to the area.
Okay, so you're down a little from the original plan.
Dan, you have any comments?
Uh, the comment I had would, would have asked is what Donna asked was that it looked like it was very, very tall. But then the explanation was given it would be four trucks with ladders. And, and both parking areas would be the same height, high?
Well, the one on the south, the one that, um, covers that row of parking spaces facing Dino Nobel, that, the low edge there is actually over the dirt. So that should be higher. Um, I could look, look that, it's in, it's in the plan. We could check that. But that should be higher because you want, because the panels are sloped towards the south. I think it's in the plan. I can look, check that.
Have you submitted the plans?
Yeah, yeah, we, we submitted the plan. So we've submitted a survey and then the plan from the, uh, the manufacturer of the, uh, of the solar canopy. And that it's 183, the high point of the southern smaller array is 183 and three quarter inches. So what is that? That's, um, that's 15 feet.
One last question. I, I, I noticed in the, the color renderings that we were given, the upper side of these panels are blue, quite a vivid blue. Is that the final color?
It's, I think that's pretty close. Yeah, they, because these, these bi-facial, they are translucent. And, um, Damon, can you comment more on the color?
Yeah, I mean, the, they're a little closer to black than blue, um, but they, they, they allow light through the panels as well. So it's never like a dark area, but, um, I mean, typically, typically commercial panels have a little bit, you'll see a little bit of a blue in it. But, um, when, when they're these bi-facial, I think to you, the naked eye would look more black.
And did I, I don't know if I missed it, Mike. Did you do a summary already of what the Design Review Board said?
No, sorry. So this was discussed, uh, earlier this evening by Design Review Board and, oh. I'm sorry, we just got a message on SCTV, the direct feed is not. Melissa, could you just, SCTVs, are they, are you getting messages? They're not running?
Yeah, I'm getting two people telling me that we're not on the air anymore.
All right, um, that's a problem. Thank, so, thank you, Melissa. Did they say which one? Are we not on YouTube or are we not on the, uh, channel?
One says, why have you gone off the air? The commission is no longer on SCTV, is now advertising and music.
Let me, we're going to have to reach out to Mark Ornstein quick too.
He's hold for technical difficulties.
Yes, I'm sorry. No, it, it, we have to make sure we're following executive order. Otherwise, unfortunately, we're going to suspend the meeting.
Right, otherwise it's an illegal meeting.
Yep. Let me.
Someone else just told me that it is on YouTube.
Yeah, I'm seeing it on, on, on YouTube. Okay.
I'm seeing it streaming on SCTV's actual website.
Okay. Well, we're, we're technically, you can watch it live, so we, we are, we are, we're following the, uh, executive order. But let me just email Mark just to make sure. Laura, do you have Mark's, uh, tech cellphone?
All right.
Let me check. Hold on for one second.
Okay.
And Mike, this is Sean. You're streaming on SCTV's site and on YouTube.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to inform him that we're off the television. Um, if, since we're on YouTube and we're on SCTV's website, like I said, I, I, we, I'm comfortable to say we can proceed with the meeting. Because we just, under the executive order, the, the meeting has to be broadcast in a, in a way that the public can, uh, participate, watch if they otherwise would be able to participate.
And where did, Mike, where do we notice the meeting to? What did the notice of the meeting say the
Everywhere.
address was to tune in?
All the, all the above.
We're good.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, I'm sorry. So thank you for the, thank you for the heads up, Melissa.
Yep.
Bruce, you asked me about Design Review. Um, earlier this evening, Design Review discussed this application and it came to a favorable recommendation based on the changes that were made to the previous plan. And Scully's provided were detailed, uh, view from aerials of kind of showing what these panels will look like and where they're going. And also the fact that the panel that's in the middle, which would be the closest to Drake Hill in the, in the parking lot, that was the overall footprint, as Mark kind of alluded to, was, was decreased. If members remember, it was a larger footprint that was there that, and there was concerns that maybe the visibility from Drake Hill would be increased due to the proximity and the size. And, you know, with the, with putting some of the panels on the building, which are very limited in, in sight and how they've kind of redesigned the panels, uh, Design Review found a favorable recommendation on this application.
Good. Mike, the, um, lighting. Is there adequate lighting in the site plan that we have?
So, so the lighting actually was discussed at the Design Review Board too. And the, the comment was, was, was really the lightings that were, the, the light is, that's being proposed will be underneath the, the, um, panel shielded, directed downwards. So it's really just shining underneath the panel. Um, and what the, the lights that are being removed from the site kind of, they're, they, they light a larger area. But the balance, it should light at least the, the parking areas that are affected by this construction.
Okay, so it's basically interior lighting?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Is there a, any more questions from any of the commission members? Did you write us?
And I, and I apologize. I, I don't know why I had a staff report, but it's not, I must have forgot to upload it to the packet. The, the only two, the two conditions I would ask that the commission entertain on this is that one, an administrative zoning permit is required for the installation of the panels. And that two, uh, that any changes must be made in writing to the, to the, uh, Planning Department staff for changes to grading and landscaping. And said, said changes are to be made in writing and approved by And said said changes are to be made in writing and approved by staff prior to implementation in the field.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to accept this application 20 dash 09?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept application 20 dash 09 of Mark and Ika Scully, Soul Train LLC for a site plan approval to install solar carports at the property located at 690 Hot Meadow Street, Zone SCZ with the conditions outlined previously to my motion made by Mr. Glidden.
Who's second? Bruce?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstain. Carry six, nothing. Thank you very much, Mark. And Ika.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next order of business is a discussion of the Stardust LLC storage facility. I think this is a preliminary discussion. So who is presenting, Mike? Do you know?
So you have with you the the property owner, the Antonios, Stephen and Lisa are with us. And their their representative is Terry Han from ADA, and I'll turn the floor over to Terry and company.
Thank you very much. This is Terry Han, principal of LADA PC. How you guys doing tonight?
Very well.
Thanks. If you if I can share the screen, I can put some images up for you so that you're not going back and forth between Dropbox. We do have do have some changes from what that was based on information so that the what was in your packet is a little bit different. This property is the Old Well Site, 20 Terrifield Road, which is located on Terrifield Road. Before you get to the bridge, go know the Farmington River has frontage on the Farmington River, Terrifield Road and St. John's Place. It is slightly off of Hot Meadow Street 10 and 2, but I think fairly identifiable. The currently current uses are the restaurant. There are two residential structures, some storage and some office space that is within the Old Well Building. Just reminding you what it looks like at the moment. The picture on the left hand side is the front of the building. And the second picture is the rear of the building. The this building's been around for a long time. And back back when it was Gemini's, if anybody was around at that point, I do remember even in high school, coming here for concerts and a wide variety of things that had a very, very large parking lot because it used to hold a lot of people. And those times at this point are it's very different now. The restaurant use doesn't need as much parking. It's got a very large area of impervious surface. And then beyond the impervious surface is a sort of open area that is flat. In addition, this property in 2015 went through a LOMAR application, letter of map revision to identify where the actual 100 year flood limit was. It is defined as the 154.2 elevation, which is off the top of that plateau as you go down the hill towards the floodplain area. So when you look at the existing conditions here, you can see that on the left hand side is the Farmington River. There's a floodplain plateau. And that is identified because of floodplain soils in Connecticut are considered wetlands. Then it goes up a hill, and then there's another plateau. And just over the top of that hill, there's a driveway here that runs along to the the structures that are in the rear. That's the limit of the flood 154 point contour. The site has multiple curb cuts, and there are multiple buildings on the property, the Old Well. There's another residential structure on St. John's, and then two buildings in the back. Just remind us where we're at. There is currently in discussion, the bike path is proposed to extend along Terrifield Road. And the property owners in discussions with Jeff Shea and the town about cleaning up the curb cuts, cutting them back a little bit, reorganizing those so that there it's a little bit easier to maintain as a bike path. The proposal is to take that large field area and part of the the existing parking and to use it for self storage. The office for the self storage would be located within the building itself. And it would be located so that you would basically come in the corner of the building in what is the northeast corner of the building, be handicap accessible, and then be able to access the self storage through the existing parking area so that it would be easily visible and can be main constructed and maintained with good security. Because this area is all nice sands and gravels, stormwater is proposed off the edge of the pavement in infiltration basin so that that would be addressed on the plateau. There are changes proposed to the existing parking so that we can reduce some of that pavement, move the pavement associated with the the self storage and to provide screen planting around the perimeter as well as a stormwater filter strip off on the east side. One of the the way that the building would be modified is that we would propose to take the the window here and to take that out and replace that with a door. Make sure that the sidewalk is handicap accessible, and then the parking spaces would be on the other side of the pavement. That would give the view straight in like you see in this photo back to where the self storage would be. This is just an enlargement in case anybody had any questions. It meets all the requirements for setbacks. It is not as well as impervious surface, building coverage, etc. And I think at this point, it's a fairly straightforward application, if it makes sense. So our question is, do we have any questions that we should be preparing to answer when we come back with a formal application? And if there are any other thoughts or issues that we should address?
Terry, how tall are the?
Oh, they're a single story. They're single. It's just a single story building. You know, those.
No, 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 not the buildings.
I'm sorry.
The screening plantings.
The screen plantings, what we're going to do is on the surroundings on the north and the west side, that would be up on, let's say, a three or four foot high berm. And then on top of that would be about a five, six foot high trees.
Okay.
So it'll be the trees will be taller than the buildings.
How about the what the materials and the colors that you're thinking about for the exterior?
The the self storage comes in a it's like a kit that that they do. So it's a it's a metal type building on a concrete foundation with a roof. And at this point, we're looking at probably an earth tone, like a tan color and a green, like a dark green roof. Something to make it blend.
The restaurant is is going to go away?
No, not at this time. No. No, just a they're just a there's excess room within the building itself. And this is the area that's sort of at the front. When was there last week, they were doing sort of an exercise class in there. So it's about it's about 300 or 400 square feet within the building that would serve as an office. You don't really need anything more than that.
Okay, so the the kind of the banquet area that they used.
Yeah, it's it's right in the corner here. So when you come in the building this way, there's a big open zone right here. So it would take a corner of that. And and you really don't. I think it's it's a good way to sort of reactivate the building. There's a lot of square footage in this building that's not being used. And and it readily handicap accessible, and it keeps the building active.
But this iteration is different from the first in that the structure closest to Terrifield Road was identified as the office.
That's correct.
And now it's not. It's additional storage.
Correct, correct. And and a couple of reasons why we did that, the original ones that we put out there did not take into account that we were going to need stormwater. The our assumption, our assumption was that this platform out here, my recollection from frankly, high school was we used to park out here all the time. But it was not determined to be an impervious surface, so we do need to provide stormwater. So the the development got it got squished. And quite honestly, thinking about how to keep the Old Well Building active and to sort of re-envision how that might work, diverting the attention to a new office building, you know, over in this area seemed counterproductive.
Is there still a climate control building?
No, not at this time.
And how does the entrance closest to Terrifield Road get used?
This would be emergency access.
Okay.
Yeah, the main gate, the main gate, which is all, you know, car keyed, card keyed, and all that kind of stuff would be here.
Because there are fence around.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah. So there there's a fence around the whole complex. It ties into the back of the buildings. So there would be fence all the way around here.
So when the the vision is that then when people come with a box truck full of stuff, they're going to put into a unit or two.
Yes.
They're not coming in right off of Terrifield Road. They're going through the parking lot.
They're coming through this this entry. So what one of the things that we did is within the parking lot itself was to redefine that the because there's no islands. I mean, it's barely striped at the moment. So we define the parking area more clearly by adding lanes and islands so that you'd be able to you would come in to the gate, pass the Old Well Building and then go in.
How big? How big are the buildings? You said they're one story, but are they?
They're one story high. They're they're different sizes. Some of them are 30 feet wide. Some of them are 40 feet. The biggest is 60. The ones on the perimeter are 15 and 20 feet wide.
Are they flat roofed?
No, it has a slight pitch on it. So that so we pick up the water on the shed roof component and put it into the ground.
So they're they're just angled in one direction?
The the ones all on the outsides are angled as a single shed roof. The ones in the middle have a peak on them, so you have garters on each side.
How many square feet total?
It's just around 45,000 is what we're showing right now.
So on on that dimension issue, Terry, what do you what for my information, anyway? What do you measure the total for the calculation of impervious surface? It's quite a large lot. I forget, was it four acres or something like that?
The lot is is I'm sorry, the lot is, I just had a brain fart, is 12 is 12 acres plus.
Oh, okay.
And so we are the existing conditions is somewhere just around 20% 22% impervious cover and will be a little bit closer to probably 32%. So we're adding about 10% more cover.
Right, but you're nowhere near the limit.
No.
Okay.
That's because of the large well in there to the east.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you do you have a drawing with any of the the residences to the north?
Hang on.
Relative to the site?
That's why I did the aerial. So you can see up on St. John's Place, there there are two residents on St. John's Place, and then that development.
Simsbury Landing?
Yes, it is to the north of that. So our our interface is this particular area. That's the area that we were talking about screening and putting a berm on these areas here.
Donna, I thought you were talking about the residences that are on this property. No?
No, I was talking about the houses behind it. Yeah.
Okay. Well, let me ask another question. This might be, I mean, it isn't. It's not your work, Terry. But when I when I looked at the Simsbury zoning map, it looked to me like there wasn't any recognition of a adjustment to this line. It shows the flood zone going almost to the building. And I understand that it was corrected, but I mean, I understand that in 2015, there was an application in 2016. It was published in the Federal Register. So, you know, some change was granted, but our zone hasn't been changed. The Simsbury flood zone still goes up to the building. Or near the.
I can tell you though that there is a change in the GIS information when you look at the flood map. So when you add the flood line onto your GIS information, it is different.
But I don't know, Mike, maybe you can help us out here. We're going to be asked to approve something, and it's not illogical. But our zoning map says that flood zone goes up near the building. There's no adjustment.
Right. And so your your zoning map, your your actually zoning regs refer to the flood insurance rate map, the current one. You know, any revisions for the floodplain zone? It's not ideal, but you know, the floodplain zone, as it changes, we don't have to update our, what do you call it, zoning map? Because we refer to the federal document to say that is where the lines stand. So in this case, sometimes when those LOMAs are approved, the line moves like the width of your eyelash. So you may not see it on the map like this case a little different. It moves basically length of a building, which I agree with you. When you look at it, you're going, how can you do that in the floodplain zone? This is a this is the type of use we don't want to see in the floodplain zone. But this is it's 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 been approved by FEMA, the relocation of the line. So they're they're technically out of the floodplain based on their LOMA. And I would say that, like I said earlier, because that preamble you have in your regs, I'd say that they're safe to say that they're they're outside of the area, which would be subject to the floodplain zone zone regulations.
Okay, so is there a process to periodically actually update our floodplain zone to the to FEMA's map?
Well, yeah, it's some of the changes we we can have the GIS consultant to update because obviously.
I'm not. I'm not. I don't want to sound like I'm hard to deal with here, but this thing was approved five years ago.
No, you're right. You're right. It's the consultant had should update that for this portion.
Maybe you could bring that to their attention. Thank you. The other thing I was curious about is that means that we're this application submitted would be submitted as a B1. Is that your intention?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't see storage identified as a permitted use in B1. Did I? It could be. I just did a quick look. I didn't know if this conversation was going to also involve the suggestion as to a change of the zone.
It's specially permitted. It's in the special permit section.
Okay.
That was one of the ones I suggested we change.
Okay. All right. Any more questions of the commissioners? I think the sense of the commission is interesting. As long as it meets the regs. And we'll have to have a special exception, right, for the use?
Right, since it has to. Okay.
And I thank you.
If when you come back, though, how I think it would help us to see the draw, the elevations.
Yes, no, we'll have we'll have buildings for, you know, so so that we can see what it is and probably a 3D masking so you can see what's going on.
Oh, really? Good.
Because they're very short buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, then next order of business is general commission business. Mike did an update of the industrial regs as he had promised. And so I think we should discuss that. Everybody looked at that?
No, I have not. I didn't know it was done.
I didn't realize it was updated either.
Well, do you want to defer that till next time?
Well, maybe there's a screen sharing scenario where.
Well, maybe there's a screen sharing scenario where he could put it up here, how long is it?
It's um, it's four pages.
Oh, yikes.
Can you do that, Mike?
Uh, unfortunately, I I'm using a different device, I couldn't do the screen share tonight, I apologize.
Let me share, I got it.
Okay, you got it.
Just happens to be right on top. Okay, I'm gonna say screen share. And then I wanna pick. Okay, got it?
Yep.
Now, where did you find that in the industrial regulations folder?
No, it's outside the folder.
Ah, okay, because that's where I was looking, all right.
So, so anything red is deletions, blue underline is is new. And I'm sorry, I probably should have did red strike through, but I wasn't sure. I just wanted to make sure there's a clear difference.
Okay.
So the first, I think it scrolled to the next page.
Okay, this is start of page two.
Yep, so so based on a few commissioners' comments, um, we allow certain uses by as of right in these districts, and we were requiring them as special exceptions in our existing, for example, the the private recreational. So 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 what what happened over at um uh Hundred Chris Mill, one in the uh pond, I changed it, now it would be a s- a site plan approval for those recreational uses. Um, same thing with the business uses, because we already allow it. I deleted this last sentence, and I and I could show you why later. This could stay or go, it's not, it's not a deal breaker, I was just trying to do something different with similar what the other communities were doing. Um, this was a redundant one, that as Kevin pointed out, we were, we we identified the use, not all permitted, but yet on the next page, it was permitted. So I just deleted the 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 first call out, because it just contradicted what we've allowed.
That storage is, is this the storage we're referring to for the thing we just looked at? Because this is an industrial zone, right?
This is industrial zone, yeah, yeah, there's, there's another call out for storage um, further down. Or warehousing and storage, I believe it's on, it's after.
Okay, see the whole second page, Mike?
Yep. So truck, truck terminals and we we put on warehouses, that was the other thing that the commission said, why do we keep calling out warehouses and contradicting allowing it, but then saying it's not allowed? So it's just truck terminals now are not allowed in the I1, they're allowed by special permit in the I2, but if you don't, you want to take truck terminals out, we can do that.
Okay, warehouses is. All right, next page.
So I I took out the wireless telecommunications uh uh uses, and I'll explain later why this came out, um, uh, well, actually, right before that, we'll go up. The uses that are using that the, basically, it's a junkyard, uh, without calling a junkyard. It was allowed in the I2 as a site plan, a site plan approval. I think just for the potential, that kind of a use for obnoxious or, you know, nuisance related issues, you probably want it to be a special permit and go through a public hearing process. So it'd be limited to the I2 zoning district, but, you know, through a public hearing process. So the two wireless communications, I I took that out, and I I'll explain why, because I rewrote these two uses later. The other, same as sand and gravel pits, you already said that they weren't allowed. My fear with keeping them in, keeping that in the regulations is if someone were to purchase a property in another zoning district and say, hey, I want to apply for a use variance with the zoning commission to establish a stone quarry or gravel pit, they could for the fact you have it as a use in your regs, so that's why I deleted it. So it'll get into, it's not there, it's not allowed. Um, and you go on to the, so the last page is all stuff that I added. And this was based on everyone else's regs, so one, the public utility substations pursuant to the Connecticut Siting Council, probably just Connecticut Siting Council approvals. Already, those uses are allowed, because the Siting Council will trump you, so I just put them as okay, so there as, th- there's no permits around uh required.
Mike, are, are they, they don't have to even apply to us, the Siting Council?
That's correct.
So why do we need this?
So what'll happen, though, is, let's say that it's it's a tower that's owned by, uh, you know, a tower company that builds it or or a private individual, and there's some sort of financing behind it, where they may have a mortgage on it. If they come in, if we take that out of our regs, they'll come into my office and say, is this illegally permitted use under your regs? And it just, it triggers a lot of headaches for the property owner, so rather than taking it out and just saying, well, it's non-conforming, because in theory, we don't have the authority under statute to approve um utility installations approved by the Siting Council. I kept it in there to say, it's allowed, no permit required.
Well, maybe it's the phrasing, if it just said, public utility substations as approved by the Connecticut Siting Council. Pursuant to is not as clear as approved by.
I will, I will change that to say approved.
Am I allowed to ask a question, even though I'm not seated right now?
Sure.
Yeah, so when I think Connecticut Siting Council, I think Windmill in Colebrook, right? And I would hate to put it in here and say pursuant to Connecticut Siting Council, and then have something changed via a court case or at a state statute that actually gave localities input, and then we've already granted it over to the Connecticut Siting Council, because I for one would like more control over something that's the Connecticut Siting Council was doing, if we possibly can. So I would hate to permit something that that was subsequently, without having to come back in and watch it all the time.
And and this was a change, I just kind of, I noticed that other communities were were putting this in their regs, so I mean, this is not something, I think that, you know, if if there's, if there's other members would like to see it worded, how it was in the existing regs, it can, it doesn't have to change.
What was the wording in in the existing, Mike?
Um, it was wireless telecommunications sites located on a building shield from view. Wireless sites where antennas mounted to existing antennas, utility poles, water towers, lights, standards, bridges or other structures. But it was only allowed by special exception in the I2 zoning district. May- and maybe, maybe we don't, we can, you can digest that change for the next meeting and see whether, you know, we want to go into that. The other one, uh, new change would be open space, uh, because it's not called out in your industrial regs, open space in general. That would be okay, no permit required. Medical office and clinics, uh, I put this as a as a permitted site plan. Um, just because, you know, you have the issue with, we have this office space, and what are you gonna put in it? Um, with some medical uses looking to relocate, you know, um, it pauses an issue. If you were, if you recall, uh, Ed Cuero, who owns two-two-five Hop Meadow Street, um, it was rezoned from I2 to B3, uh, mainly because he had some office space, that he had a medical user that was moving into the building, and legally, they they, the use wasn't permitted under the existing zoning regulations. So this change kind of addresses some of those vacancy issues by by allowing the medical uses in these, some of these already approved office space. Um, retail, so this is just a, just, it's been the, I I said earlier, uh, about the the uses that were called out is primarily accessory to industrial park. Um, several other communities we looked at allow retail, but they have uh, requirements on what, what is the type of retail they allow in the industrial zone. So I looked at it from the sense of, talking to a few commercial brokers, are we gonna see anything that would be available for for square footage, uh, that would be less than three thousand square feet that could work to support a retail use in an industrial zone property? And the consensus was no. So then that's where my three thousand number came in, it was similar to, um, I think it was Bloomfield as this reg. Um, either Bloomfield or Branford, um, and then put a cap on twenty thousand square feet for a site plan approval. Um, and then retail that exceed twenty thousand square feet, special exception. Um, so then those types of uh concerns of of the abutting surrounding area would come up once you're dealing with a larger building, a larger parking uh uh parking lot, et cetera. Commercial kennels is the next use that I added for especially permitted. A lo- a lot of the communities ha- allow for commercial kennels. Um, if we're gonna allow them in the regs, I would strongly recommend that the commission consider that especially permitted use. Um, just for the, just for the purposes of, if you have a a doggy daycare, you have a uh long-term boarding facility for kenn- for kennels, and they have to have outdoor runs, that's where we're gonna get the complaints of noise, et cetera, it's kind of the nuisance thing, that you you're not gonna want to live near the place with the dogs, et cetera, so I think in fairness to someone who may be an abutting property owner adjacent to an industrial zone property, or just in a general area of one of these industrial zone property, um, the special exception or public hearing process and appropriate, and that uh means her approval of that use. And that's what I had so far for uses. Otherwise, you know, there there was a few uses that were a little very uh community specific that I think due to our location and their location, either proximity to uh either mass transit or highways, et cetera, it it just, we're not gonna see uses like that. The retail component, I can see that use coming up. Um, and that one of the things that you're gonna start hearing, it's kind of, you know, was brought to my attention today, was um, Amazon is is now in this phase where they're realizing, um, they, you know, the online platform works for certain products, it doesn't work for others. The others are furniture, they're struggling to sell furniture online, so what you may see is an Amazon uh, facility open up where they are, are they selling uh furniture out of that facility? So that may, you know, this opens the door for a use such as that po- possibly. That's what I could see down the road, because they're gonna want something, if they're gonna go into an existing building, they're gonna want something that's large, cavernous, et cetera, and some of your, like, you know, your areas, for example, Herman Drive, or, you know, you have the industrial little pocket that's off of Deer Park. Um, th- those may be locations where a use such as that may pop up in the future. And I think it's appropriate to plan for that sort of change the market.
Mike, though, why are they, um, three thousand dollar limit? Because I'm I'm thinking of Herman Drive area. And and what about a print shop? What does that count as? Is that not retail? Because there's some stuff in there that's sold retail.
Yeah, they go as, I would, I would take it as retail.
Yeah, so is three thou- do we have to limit it to over three thousand square feet?
Well, we could say not to exceed twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah, no, I don't know that you need a bottom.
Okay.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but, you know, I'm thinking that the print shop up there is probably smaller than three thousand square feet.
Yeah, this was just like, like I said in the last meeting, this was a, just started a conversation.
Can somebody educate me, how big square footage wise is your typical big box?
Uh. Thirty thousand and up.
Thirty and up? Okay, thanks.
We've had these discussions.
Yeah. I'm learning.
Um, and then we, and the recreational, we talked about, you know, could you have a theater? Or theater storage, like, what does that count as? So right now, in Herman Drive, you have theater sets, building and storage. Under what?
The Simsbury Light Opera owns a building, as you're, as you're coming off Lordship Point, it's, I think, the first building on the left, it's a blue building. Um, it's the first building, when you get into Herman Drive, that's actually on the, on the southern side of Herman Drive. It's the first one that's actually located in primarily in Simsbury.
Yeah, so what do we consider that?
That was, that was warehousing.
All right, so do we, is our warehousing good enough now? Or or or, you know?
Well, the theater question poses an interesting, you know, question, you know, uh, remember when Gipsel Love approached you about doing, converting one of the barns into a kind of event space? And and the commission uh gave it, gave him a an interpretation, he gave that catch-all reg that said, basically, you allow other uses in the industrial zoning district, provided they're they're accessory to other to the um, the overall area. I think that's, that's how Simsbury Community Farm was able to, or discuss the potential of a theater down the road. So.
But part of that discussion was about a venue that they could do weddings.
Right, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that was weddings, yeah, I'm sorry. With staff, they they went one step further about possible theater, but it never got to the commission. They failed, uh, there was a funding issue.
But that drives the same point, I mean, why wouldn't you allow um, a theater in an industrial zone? Um, it's kind of like, uh, Long Wharf Theater in New Haven, okay, it's in their food distribution center, and it's, you know, and it's successful.
Yeah.
Um, you know, because you, you needed, you know, a high roof. So there was the theater, and and then the other recreational was, you know, is it specific enough, you know, if you want to dance? Studio. Um, I forget what the recrea- oh, passive, you know, that's not passive recreation.
No.
You know, so, you know, the, the retail recreational um, and self-storage. And I think we had the issue up in um Herman Drive Lordship with a, a truck repair guy.
Yep.
You know, is it still allowed? Because you did something with truck repair here.
We we added that use back in, when was that, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen?
Yeah, but is that still in this list?
Yes, that's still there. I didn't change that, th- those uses, because that was a, that was, remember, that was proposed by the um uh, the applicant, and there was.
So the text amendment at the time?
Yep, there was a caveat, no outdoor storage of unregistered vehicles and equipment. Because remember, we had that discussion, like, what do you do when the car comes in, is all smashed up, and you're waiting for insurance to total it, it's sitting there for thirty days, unregistered, where are you gonna store it?
Right. Sounds like Getty Station.
What was the answer to that, Mike? Where are you gonna store it?
Uh, they were gonna store it, they were gonna, they were gonna store it indoors or in in locations that are not visible outdoors. So actually, that one, we added the not, no outdoor storage, because remember, they were, they didn't give us a warm and fuzzy on making sure that the the junk stays in the building.
Right, um, Dave, can you move up? Because we also have, you know, Autobahn is up there too, and I don't know what they qualify as in the in the in the industrial zone.
What are you looking for?
Um, any vehicle repair, oh, vehicle, yeah, right there, excluding sales looking, okay, so that does it.
No, there's no, yeah.
Yeah, okay, right.
So you think we should add theater use as a separate line?
Well, I don't know if there's something else that I can fall in with.
No, you you really, I think you're gonna have to add that as a separate.
I mean, that's the same one, you know, the rec- whether it's a dance studio, um, theater.
Mike, maybe you could just check some other towns on where they.
Arts venue of some sort?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking, just performing arts rather than theater, right? Because it could be a music studio or something along those lines, too.
Okay, I I'll also ask a few, my, I'll I'll look around and ask a few peers how how their regs handle that use.
Great.
And then I'll figure out a way, the the question would be, I'm assuming you want to treat it similar to your uh, indoor recreational facilities and and, you know, permitted a site plan approval for both this zoning districts?
Yeah, I think site plan's okay, I personally.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and what about self-storage? Is that under, do you, no, you're getting rid of that warehouse wholesale or or storage?
Hold on, I'll find it for you. So you already have warehousing and the manufacturing processing of assembly of goods by site plan approval in both districts?
Yeah, that's, that's not the same as um self-storage, though, I wouldn't think of that as self-storage.
Well, do you want me to, do you want me to add self-storage to that list?
Yeah, I think so.
Because self-storage almost has a retail component to it.
Correct.
It's individuals bringing things in and out rather than trucks moving things. It's individuals bringing things in and out rather than trucks moving things. That is different traffic impact.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's different. And then, you know, often they have, you know, they sell boxes and other.
And they rent trucks.
They could, but that, that's a whole other.
Or they offer them at a discounted price as an attraction.
Yeah, not all of them, but yeah.
No, not all of them.
That's something that, you know, we should consider as to whether that would be allowed.
Well, Dave must be on the right track because I don't think that, that site plan Terry just showed us really is going to accommodate the kind of movement of trucks that I've, I've personally been involved in. The self-storage over on Brickyard Road in Farmington. The company I worked for had two 10 by 20 foot units there that we had for more than 10 years. We used to go over there for record storage, really.
Yeah. But there's, there's a self-storage unit off Hop Meadow Street at the north end already.
Very close to this one, yeah.
And I've never noticed really any traffic going in and out of there.
Right. And they have a straight shot, you know, the gate opens and you're right in there from Hot Meadow Street. There's no turns. You just turn off Hot Meadow and you drive straight in. Oh, wow.
Anyway, Mike, you're going, you're going to do another draft for us, right?
Yeah, I'll do another draft and, and I apologize. I was going to have, um, breweries and distilleries, s- some definitions from other communities for tonight. And it just didn't get, I didn't finish that. Um, I'll have that for your next meeting. That was the other thing I promised the commission. I apologize. I, you know, this, this took a little more time than expected. And then we threw a special meeting in there.
We haven't heard from, um, our town attorney, right?
No, we did not. No, we did not. And I asked that, uh, you know, that we'd have it. The commission wanted to see that memo for the next meeting. If you would like me to, uh, prepare a little memorandum from you to say, I'd like to know when we'll get our, uh, sign regs, I can. But I, we have a meeting, I think it's next Friday, uh, another, uh, legal meeting coordination that I can bring this up again.
Okay.
Uh, Mike, I know you just said you were going to deal with distilleries and breweries. There is that sort of hybrid thing over in Canton on a farm where they have a distillery on the farm. And I think, I'm not sure if they have a limited menu of what they're brewing well, or distilling. But, um, it's a farm. It's not an industrial location. I don't know what they did with their zoning regulations to allow it, but.
Yeah, so they.
It's something to think about.
Bruce, that's a great, that's a great point. The farm breweries, the farm distilleries, the farm, the farm, uh, hard cider groups. That's the new use too, that they pop up in a kind of agricultural setting. I, I can, while I'm looking for the, a good definition of breweries, distilleries, I'll grab those two just so we have them. And we can add those to the list.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay. I think it's dinner time, but I have one comment to make. We, we went through a, an exercise in our special meeting on, on Friday. And, uh, I thank you guys for, uh, editing the drafts that I put together and getting the bad stuff out of it and making something that was clean and a clean submission. Uh, there've been a few people, I think, uh, three or four comments have been made to me specifically about, um, cleaning up my language and making sure that I'm saying things in a polite way. And I apologize for that. But I, I just wanted to point that out that you guys were helpful in making sure that what went out was, uh, good. So.
No I and team, Mr. Chairman. Happy to help.
Good. I would entertain a motion for adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike.